This is our special meeting tonight on Monday, September 23rd. Tonight we'll be talking about a public hearing that deals with the conference center, also city administrator job description. And at one time, we were going to go into closed session over real estate. I think there's been some discussion possibly that we could just do that in open session. So unless there's a motion later to do that, we'll just do that in open session. Before we call the meeting to order, we will have roll call led by Cindy, who's filling in for Phyllis. Welcome Cindy, also known as the queen here at City Hall.
Here.
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 And we have a quorum. Okay, first up, we have our public hearings tonight. This is dealing with our conference center. Obviously, you've heard about that, and that's why you're here. First of all, I have Ms. Stephanie Bell, but before we get into that, I'll let Drew Hilpert, our interim city administrator and city counselor, go over the rules of the day, so to speak. Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the third of our pre-public hearings. Before we get the final and best proposals in, we do intend to hold more public hearings after those final and best proposals come in. Today's remarks are limited to three minutes. The reason for that is that we've got some other public business we've got to go on to. Again, we're sticking to the, we're trying, or attempting to stick to four topics of desirability of one proposal over the other, including location, facilities the public would like to have in a conference center, the amount of subsidy, if any, which should be provided for the conference center beyond the $9 million offered in the RFP, the desirability of providing city finance parking at either location. The purpose for the questions is that we're trying at this point to assist the developers in formulating their proposal to fit the desires of the community and the desires of the council. The question about whether or not we should go ahead and go through the final proposal will be one that we'll come to after we get the final and best proposals in. With that, Mr. Mayor, I think we're ready.
All right. With that, please limit your remarks as close as you can to three minutes, so we can get everyone done this evening. And first up is Stephanie Bell. Stephanie, welcome.
Well, then apparently it was five minutes. I may have just-
We'll go with five, then. Can we get five on the clock?
We should have time, anyway.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Stephanie Bell, 136 Riverwood Drive. Good night. I want to take you on a journey. We are going to a conference. We get in the night before, and we settle in at our hotel, and my room has a view of the majestic Capitol Building. We are up early before the conference starts, and we take a short walk. The locals have told us Coffee Zone is the place to be, and there the coffee and the rocket fuel is spot on. The conference is going well, and the sessions end at four to allow us to explore downtown. We stroll by the Lewis and Clark Monument. It was your favorite. And you love the architecture of the Missouri State Supreme Court Building. We pop into the MSP Museum. I had no idea there was so much interesting history related to MSP. We decided we're going to have to come back to Jefferson City for a weekend visit. We stroll down the block and found the most wonderful gift stores. We loved the jewelry selection at South Bank, and we treated ourselves to some new bracelets. We found a beautiful place for dinner, Cork. Exposed brick, tin ceilings, all the charm one could want. The food was delicious, and we stayed out past our bedtime for a glass of wine. On the way back, we bumped into other conference attendees. Some had been rooting on the Tigers at Jay Finney's, others had enjoyed an Italian meal outside at Madison's. I'm not sure where we'll go tomorrow night. Now, we are each sitting at our family dinner tables, following the conference, or maybe we are sitting in our workplace, or in board meetings for other organizations, and we talk. What do we tell people about our experience in Jefferson City? Did you know, when you go, you're going to have to eat here? You have to shop here. We are all now our own ambassadors for Jefferson City, dispersed throughout the region. Now, think about the other site locations. Where did you get coffee at 7:00 AM? Where did you eat? When you look out of your hotel room, what do you see? Where do you get a late-night dinner or have a drink? What was your impression of Jefferson City? What will you tell your family and friends about your visit? And when you are helping plan a conference, where will you suggest it be held? The location of a conference center is not just a matter of upfront costs. This isn't nostalgia, it's business. The opinions of meeting planners and conference attendees will make or break this project. We must use taxpayer monies to build it where it best promotes our city and where it will have the best chance for success. Speaking of taxpayer money, I believe it was stated to the council in the last hearing that the mall site will require less or no subsidy than the downtown site. No evidence was offered in support of this claim. There has been a lot said about the parking structure, and about the city and/or taxpayers having to additionally fund a parking structure. But the taxpayers will also pay for parking at the mall. The RFP submittal for the mall site states, "The existing parking lot at the mall offers roughly 2,300 parking spaces. Based on the existing surface spaces and shared parking agreement between the hotel and the mall, it will be easy to allocate ample existing parking spaces, such that the hotel and conference center are adequately parked." But this isn't the end of the story. A draft plan is set to be proposed to the city's TIF commission in the coming weeks that details the significant costs to taxpayers associated with the Capitol Mall site. That proposal includes both a TIF and a CID. The plan proposes to use $10.6 million present day from the TIF and nearly $5.1 million present day generated from a 1% sales tax to use for redevelopment costs. One such proposed redevelopment is parking lot. Repaving, renovating, resurfacing, installing adequate lighting, and repairing existing lighting. Taxpayer money will also be used to fund exterior and interior structure and facade improvements at the mall. The total taxpayer cost over time would be nearly $37 million. This is in addition to the $9 million on the table from the lodging tax. There is already a parking fund with several million dollars in it to use towards a parking garage in downtown. The parking improvements from the Capitol Mall site location would come as a result of the new additional 1% sales tax. When reviewing the proposals, please consider all the facts regarding the expenditure of taxpayer money before a decision is made. Finally, I would just like to say there are several people in the audience who are in support of a downtown site location, and if those people would please stand.
Stephanie, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Next, I have on our list here tonight, Mr. Frank Rysek.
Frank Rysek, 406 Chestnut Street. Mr. Mayor, city council people, fellow citizens. First, I'd like to say I'm representing myself and no city committee. And addressing the concept of which proposal to choose, I will say neither. Neither is big enough. Purpose of the conference center, or convention center, if it's bigger, we can call it a convention center, is to bring conventions and meetings into town which presently cannot meet here because there is not enough meeting space. Two specific conventions which cannot meet here, I believe, if I've got my information right, are the Mason's Grand Lodge and the Daughters of the American Revolution. A new proposal has come forward, and in order to consider this new proposal, we're going to have to essentially start over and find some way to reject the two proposals on the table, permit, yes, create a new RFP. And the new RFP will hopefully say larger space and no new hotel meeting rooms. The lack of building new hotel meeting rooms will allow for the construction of a bigger space which will allow conventions to come into the city of Jefferson, which presently have to go somewhere else. As far as location, I will remain neutral on that at this point, except to say that if it is a location other than downtown, there's probably going to involve some kind of shuttle bus service. I've not figured out how it's going to get paid for, but this shuttle bus service indirectly will help our transit situation. Citizens might be able to use this shuttle service as well as convention visitors from out of town, and it will, in a small way, help people who want to ride the bus. I thank you for your time, and I wish us good luck on getting a convention center in the city of Jefferson. Thank you.
Frank, thank you for being here tonight. Next, we have Kevin Evler. Going twice? Does anyone know Kevin? Was he here earlier and had to leave, or?
I don't know.
Okay. Next, I have Pat Amick. Pat, welcome. Did you drive together?
No, we didn't.
Okay. Had to ask.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name's Pat Amick, and I reside at 2610 Tanglewood Drive. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to give you my perspective. I'm an association meeting planner who plans many, many meetings for three statewide associations, and I've been in the meeting planning business for 35 years. I also had the pleasure of chairing the first Jefferson City Lodging Tax Campaign that created the funding for our Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I have two major points that I'd like to make for your consideration tonight. First of all, Jefferson City is the perfect meeting location. For the majority of my meetings, the number-one requirement for my associations is having meetings that are in a central location in our state, and obviously Jefferson City fits that requirement. Too many times, however, there is not enough space in our hotels that fit the meetings we are planning, and we are forced to consider other areas. I do believe that a conference center with a hotel property is needed, and the time is now for us to move forward. We need to make sure it is a quality property with good management, and we need to make sure that the costs for usage are in line with comparables in our area to attract and keep business. Secondly, downtown is the perfect location. While my members attend meetings in Jefferson City, they often take the time to visit their legislators in the Capitol, or schedule appointments with individuals in various departments of state government in the Truman Building and other buildings. They don't want to be bothered with driving across town. They prefer the close proximity to maximize their time while here in Jefferson City. When our sessions conclude, my members like to stay in the area and enjoy the restaurants and nightlife of our city, and the possibility of a conference center property in downtown makes great sense. I've been like many others who have an opinion but hesitate to express it, except in casual conversation. But recently, I've had numerous conversations with other meeting planners who have experienced the void in meeting space for their meetings and conventions. It reinforces my opinion that the time is now. I hope you will listen, make careful deliberations, but in the end, support the building of a structure downtown that will help enlarge our capabilities to attract larger and more conferences in Jefferson City. Thank you so much.
Pat, thanks for taking the time to be here tonight. We appreciate it. Next, I have number five, Eugen. Good evening, and welcome to City Hall.
Thank you. This is actually my first time speaking before City Hall, so thank you very much for the opportunity, and I see my time is already ticking. Well, to make this brief, I moved here after living in DC and Atlanta and Houston, and have only been here for a little over a year. And when I first moved out here, I lived in the West End out by the mall, and I just thought, where is everybody? What is there to do on a Friday night? What's there to do on a Saturday night? I just felt a little isolated out there. And then around December of last year, I moved downtown onto Washington Street, and immediately, I just felt so at home because a lot of the young professionals at my work, I work for the state, also live in very close proximity to downtown, and there's just a lot to do there. Most of the outfit that I'm wearing currently is not from the mall, but it's from a local boutique in downtown Jefferson City. Whenever we go to eat or plan happy hours, we also do that in Jefferson City. And one of the things that's a little bit tough for us for happy hours for work now is that some of our coworkers do live in Columbia because some of them say there's more to do there, and so we're always trying to drag them into our events. Now, if you're a young person and you're going to an event at a convention in Jefferson City, and your options are to stay out by the convention center, which is out by the mall, and then to drive into downtown to go out and enjoy what downtown has to offer as far as restaurants and shopping and, you know, just good nightlife, or you could, you know, drive to Columbia. It's not too much of a stretch. I think we should make it a really easy decision for people to want to stay in Jeff and to want to hang out and to want to spend their time and money and social life here. And by putting a convention center downtown, from what I know about the possible plans here, it just seems like it would be more of a draw to the people that I socialize with and their colleagues and friends. So that's just my little perspective on the issue, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks for being here tonight. Next, we have former First Lady Peggy Landwehr. I think really, once a First Lady, always a First Lady is what John told me, so I better correct myself. Peggy, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I have not stood behind this podium very much or been on the other side, but I just want to take a couple of minutes to make two points. First, I think it's good that you all paid for a fresh independent study of this issue. I believe you should listen to what the consultant told you. You can build a nice facility, but you will not accomplish your goals if it does not bring in lots of new groups. These new groups do not just show up. They're ranged by meeting planners and associate executives, just like Pat Amick just spoke about, which she does. These planners and executives have told you by almost a two-to-one margin that they prefer a downtown location because of its proximity to the Capitol complex and dining and entertainment venues. Do not ignore the advice for which you paid, or that you paid for. I don't want to end a sentence in a preposition. A facility anywhere else but downtown might be easy, and it might be quick, but it will not accomplish your long-term goals. When people hear that they have to drive or take a shuttle to attend meetings with state agencies or elected officials, they simply will not come. They will continue to go where they are having their meetings now. As a friend of mine who's attended conferences all over the country, he said, when he heard that there might be a possible site for a conference center out by the mall, he said, quote, "A conference center at the mall will be DOA, dead on arrival." Second, placing a major venue outside the central part of town would not be good urban planning, and it ignores the commercial trends. As Eugen mentioned, she shopped all of her clothes, came from a local boutique downtown. For years, you've implemented programs like Old Town and other incentives to bring merchants and other businesses to downtown as well as to the south side. You did this because you understand the long-term importance of invigorating our urban core and not becoming just like a little St. Louis. Dozens of businesses and hundreds of your residents have put their savings on the line to reinvest in the downtown and the south side. They are starting to be successful. They're coming back from about a 30-year struggle, and I can say that I can attest to that because I've lived here 31 years. Do not turn your back on them. This is your opportunity to do something that will invigorate the central core for the next 30 years. Stay consistent with the policies you have been promoting. In 2043, you want people to look back on this decision and say what a wise decision it was. In 2043, people will be glad there was a vibrant downtown adjacent to our beautiful Capitol Building, which, as you know, has won many major awards throughout the country. They will appreciate, they will be appreciative of the leaders in 2013 who had the vision to make that happen. You can create that by making the right decision now. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Charles Gaskin, 2604 Twin Hills Road, Third Ward, Second Precinct. My comments are related to some of the items that Mr. Hilpert said, but they kind of skirt around it because the people that I work with need some more information, so it's based on that are my comments. At the conclusion of my presentation, I have a pass out that I'll give you, that'll give you a clear picture of what I'm talking about during this presentation. Full disclosure of the city's position of response to my questions is necessary. This information is to be given to the News Tribune, KRCG-TV, and KMIC-TV in time for their release in the morning of Friday, September 27, 2013. And the reason why is because you guys need answers pretty quickly. The questions that are required to be answered are as follows. Those questions involving the November 16, 2010 edition of the News Tribune. What is the agreement between the city of Jefferson and the Lincoln University? What is the agreement between the city of Jefferson and the Earhart Group? What is the agreement between Lincoln University and the Earhart Group that may or may not involve the city of Jefferson? Those questions involving the January 30, 2011 edition. What are the specific losses that can be reimbursed to the Earhart Group from the city of Jefferson? Is the Farmer Holding Company aware of the above agreement between the Earhart Group and the city of Jefferson? Should the Farmer's Proposal be selected as the winner, are they eligible for the up to $100,000 reimbursement? Those questions that are involving the September 2, 2011 edition of the News Tribune. Was $600,000 more or less placed in the 2012 budget? Was $600,000 or more or less placed in the 2013 budget? Was $600,000 or more or less placed in the 2014 budget? What is the total amount that has been accumulated in whatever the budget count is that is in place for the conference center? Thank you, and good night. May I request permission to approach for this pass out?
It's okay with security. Just checking you. You're fine.
Who?
You're fine. You can give it to Drew. We've got to, we've got to keep you laughing there once in a while, Charles.
Thank you, sir.
Charles, thank you. Next, I'll let Drew hand these out right quick. Okay, next, I have on our hearing list here, Mr. Jamie Reed. Jamie. Jamie, welcome back to Jefferson City and welcome to City Hall.
Thank you very much. My name is Jamie Reed. I am the general manager of the Capitol Mall, and I would like to voice my support for the convention center being built at Capitol Mall. I'd like to start with the obvious reasons. Got plenty of space to build the center to the size and scope that the city would require. With roughly 3,000 parking spots, visitors won't have to look very hard to find an open spot. We have great access to the property that, to my knowledge, has never been underwater. And to avoid future hurdles, the site is already owned by the proposed developer. Now, I've got some, some other reasons that there would be a tremendous benefit to the, to the city as a whole to have the convention center at the mall. Combining the mall with the convention center is a very unique opportunity to transform the mall in western Jefferson City into a destination. According to the most recent market, market study completed, the convention center will attract roughly 100,000 new visitors a year to Jeff City. This would be a huge advantage for the mall in our efforts to attract the national retailers and restaurants that the citizens of Jeff City are asking for. People come up to me all the time and, and tell me how they're tired of driving to Columbia or St. Louis or Kansas City to do their shopping, and, and we need this store, that store, this restaurant, or that restaurant. This project at the mall would be a true win-win. Now, I'll, I'll be the first to tell you, we, we are working very hard to attract these new retailers to, to the mall without the convention center or anything else. But with that project, coupled with the, the property that we have, we, we could attract stores and restaurants that we would never even think about coming to Jeff City without this project. It could provide the community with the shopping, dining, and entertainment selection it desires, and it would keep those tax dollars in Jeff City. The mall site and western Jeff City have plenty of space for the various new businesses that this project could attract in, in furthering the development of the entire city and fostering job growth that comes with that. The convention center at the mall is an incredibly rare opportunity and would benefit the community as a whole and not just one segment of the city. Thank you, guys, very much for your time.
Jamie, thank you for being here. We definitely appreciate it. All right, next, on the list, I have Mr. Don Draboe. Is that correct?
He's awful close. I bet he called worse.
Well, I had it last, I had it right last time.
It's good last time. It's Trey Bue.
Trey Bue, okay.
But you did a fine job.
Well, if you're on more game shows, eventually, we'll get it right.
Okay.
Welcome, Don. Thanks for being here.
I must first comment to first presenter. She did a fantastic job, and I agree with about everything she said. Now going on, the best location is definitely in the downtown area. There's three hotels within reasonable walking distance, sufficient for the people to stay and walk to. The mall, other than the hotel that's built, is beyond reasonable walking distance. The downtown site thusly would allow for building a smaller hotel initially. This would allow more funds for the conference center. The parking garage would complement downtown Jefferson City. The late arrival, I think it should be dead on arrival. We went through this several years ago, and it killed the whole thing. Just forget them. They didn't be on time, so forget them. I do have some concerns and some offers. Me being an engineer, I have to analyze things. I looked at, I like to plan for the future. Don't plan for today. Plan for the future. Build what you can afford today. We need a minimum of $30,000 to $40,000 right now to attract anybody. In a few years, if we build that $30,000 to $40,000 now, we can attract such that we'll need $60,000 or $70,000 in a few years. There's no place in this area that has that size. And current layout, with keeping that in mind, the current layout shows both the conference center and the hotel on that one lot I'll call the DNR lot. If you build a 60,000 or 70,000 square foot conference center without going up, which can happen, but is more expensive, you take, and with the amenities required for it, you will take up about two-thirds of that DNR lot. Therefore, let the conference center itself be on the DNR lot. Build a parking garage below on the entire lot. You can build a two-level parking garage there that will accommodate approximately 200 vehicles. And I say approximately, it depends on how it's designed. You'll have additional parking area on-site around the conference center, which is close for people that just want to drive and go to the conference center. Put the hotel to the east side of Broadway on the other lot. Again, design it with future in mind, but since the Capitol Plaza is adjacent to the conference center, you can build a relatively small hotel. That lot, if you build a two-tier parking garage underground, it also would accommodate 200 plus or minus cars. I feel that the city should be in position to subsidize the parking garage. It not only benefits the conference center, it benefits the whole downtown area. We need more parking in the downtown. This could be a metered parking lot, where the city will make funds from it when conference center usage is in effect. Otherwise, you could have some kind of a give-back from people that go- Otherwise, you could have some kind of a give-back from people that go through and attend the conference center, that they get their fee remitted. There's many things could be worked out in that respect. These parking garages would put the conference center and/or the hotel constructed above the floodplain. And there's some of you gonna say, oh my God, it's gonna be flooded. How many times have we not been able to get in the Capitol Plaza parking garage in the last 25 years? Twice. That I know of. Is that a big deal? No. Now, kind of as a closing, we got to remember one thing. We are letting outside people that are coming in and staying in our hotels pay for this conference center. A conference center which will bring those same people into Jeff City to bring in more money for future additions to the conference center as well as tax dollars into Jeff City. We definitely need to plan for the future. We definitely need to build a conference center downtown Jefferson City. Thank you.
Don, thank you once again for being here tonight. Uh, next I have Mr. Dick Ockey. Welcome, Dick.
Dick Ockey, 621 South Eagle Trace. Yeah, I, when I, I went to Elias High School, I grew up in Wardsville. When I went to Elias High School, I remember all the kids from out the west end of town saying, "West is best." I'm not gonna finish that was the, the rest of the saying, but I kind of believe west is best. It's pretty evidenced by the amount of development I've done, done out there. You know, I developed Wildwood Crossing Shopping Center. The Lowe's site and many other sites out in west and a lot of office buildings out west. I think west is the area of Jeff City that's growing. I think it's a great spot for the convention center. I might, Jamie was mentioning the mall manager, I think that was his name, that, you know, if you build it, they will come. I'd kind of quote my old partner Larry Cobb when we built Wildwood Crossings. His deal was if you blast it, they will come. And, and you can see, see what happened out there, the restaurants and the shops and everything that we got out there. I think that we should always look at local developers, local businesses to, uh, and give them an edge if nothing else. The farmers' families have been here forever. They've got strong ties to the community. They're not leaving. I think they're financially sound. I think they'll deliver whatever they promise. They'll, uh, if they say they're gonna build something, do something, it's gonna happen. One, one little story, my construction company and several other people put together a group and made a proposal to the prison redevelopment commission several years ago. Uh, there were about six or eight proposals, I think, and we were narrowed down to one of the two finalists. My group was not picked. McCarmick Group out of St. Louis, Kansas City, I can't remember which, along with part of the Hall family in Kansas City and I think DCS were part of the group. And they were picked to redevelop the prison site. Our group asked for no subsidies whatsoever. We asked that the environmental cleanup be done, and we asked for no other money. McCarmick was picked as a developer, those folks from out of town. As you can see, nothing ever happened over there. It's not necessarily their fault, but within just a few months, I came back and asked for $30 million to kind of start even considering the proposal. I don't think that'll happen with the farmers and a local company. The mall has all the infrastructure in place. You're not gonna have to run any sewers. The streets are all there. Street access is much better. Matter of fact, I just, I drove down McCarthy Street just to come by the downtown site today and I don't think there's any comparison to street access and traffic. As a matter of fact, I drove here about 5 o'clock. It was pretty, pretty congested out there. Room to expand out there, and I just think it'd be a great place and stick with the local guys because you're gonna get what they promised and they'll do, do a great job. I think it is important too for us to have a viable, operating Capitol Mall. I think it's really important. And I think it would be a great asset to the mall and all the businesses in Jefferson City. If the mall stays sound, as well as all the rest of the business in Jeff. That's all I have. Thank you.
Dick, thank you very much for being here and thanks for the development. You and Larry Cobb definitely went, went on an edge whenever you took a bluff and moved it and filled it in. Our city appreciates that. Uh, next I have Mr. David Robinson. Welcome, David.
My name's David Robinson. I live at 901 Haverhill Court, Columbia. I am the owner of Mr. Bulkey's Candy Stores and also Capital Candy Candy Stores. I have built candy stores in most states in the Midwest, anywhere from Texas up to Nebraska. I just want to make you aware of what you've actually got here. You have got a mall which has been bought by local people, unlike most of the malls in the Midwest and the country. That means that they are accountable to you. The Farmer Brothers, the Farmer Brother, Columbia Mall and most malls are owned by either General Growth or Simon Mall Properties. General Growth didn't even know where Jefferson City Mall was. The leasing agent, when I tried to lease a space there, had never been to Jefferson City. That, how, when you are opening a business, can you deal with somebody when they don't know where their mall is and what they're trying to sell? You've got a situation now where you've got a local company which is capable of expanding and promoting your mall. And with the addition of the conference center, you could have something very, very special. Colum, uh, Jefferson City population isn't that high. 45,000 approximately. Columbia's about 80. Columbia still gets more of the large chains of stores. And it's not because the, the average annual income in Jefferson City is about 77,000. In Columbia, it's about 50. It's because the attraction of Columbia is with the university, et cetera, and the population peaks at around 100,000. You need something to drive businesses into your mall and get the cheesecake factories and the, the high-end stores. The only way you will do that is to amalgamate two projects, and that's the mall and the conference center. Then, most of your population won't shop for a Christmas shopping and spend it in Columbia, or Kansas City, or St. Louis. 50% of the sales of Chris, of, of, of a store are based on Christmas shopping. Most of you guys shop in Columbia or St. Louis, I'm sure you do. In, as far as main shops. Why would you want to fund the infrastructure of other cities when you can do it here and you can generate your own sales income and keep it local and therefore expand your city to a, a, a larger thing? If you, if you, if you're a business owner, I've owned businesses in Europe, et cetera, you look at the whole infrastructure of a city. That includes the shops, the facilities, everything. At the moment, your mall is, it's, it, on, on a scale, on mall scales, it's between A and C. Your mall is a C-rated mall. It could be a B or A rated mall if you let these guys do what they're saying. They, they live in the same town as you. Give them a chance. They're, they're, if they mess up, they're the ones, you know. General Growth would not even care about the mall. They mothballed it for eight years, literally. They were more worried about the parcels of land and how much money they can make from that than the actual tenants inside. Give these guys a chance. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, for being here tonight. Uh, next I have Mr. Terry Nohmeyer.
Jerry Nohmeyer, 1550.
Sorry, Jerry, it looked like a T here. I'm like, as soon as I said that, I'm like, that's not right.
1550 East Miller.
We can blame Drew. We can blame Drew, he said, so.
Be very brief. Uh, first off, I object to using taxpayer money to fund a business. How many businesses here would like to have $9 million given to them to start their business? Secondly, neither of the proposals have met the requirements of the RFP. They're both undersized and replicate pretty much what we have today in, as far as what's available. And I will close with a little food for thought. It's a little quote from Thomas Sowell. He's an economist. He says, "It's hard to imagine a more stupid or more dangerous way of making decisions than by putting those decisions into the hands of the people who pay no price for being wrong." Thank you.
All right, next we have Mr. Glenn Castalas. Glenn, welcome back. Uh, Glenn is our last speaker of the evening, by the way.
I hope you guys have spent as much time as I have going through these two proposals. Very quickly, on the Farmer's Holding Group, I've got notes all over these things. Just real quick, if you look at the drawing that they submitted, their proposal, that's one of the two that you either have to accept or reject, their ballroom space is less than 9,000 square feet. Considerably less than the 40,000 been requested. The Earhart Group, if you go through and you look at their sketches, this one has the building adjacent to the Capitol Plaza. And the hotel's about half the size of the block. And it's on the eastern end. Over, this drawing here has the facility moved another block over. Which drawing are they gonna be built on, whichever block they want? The hotel's now on the west end instead of the east end, and it's almost a full block long instead of a half a block. So, within their proposal, they have two different locations. The scope of the facility changes and the layout of the facility changes. Third, it, a convention center if built should be a standalone facility. Because if you build it in conjunction with a private enterprise, where do you draw the line between public property and private property? How do you, how do you differentiate that? And fourth, in late June, early July, you guys as a collective body looked at some, two proposals for the recycle, yard waste recycle operation. Did not allow any changes to the proposals that came in. Rejected one because they wanted to make a change. You set a precedent. To allow changes to these proposals now is to go back on the precedent you just set a few months ago. And that would just, if you do that, you're probably gonna be known as the flip-flop council. Thank you.
Okay, that's all of our presenters tonight. Drew, do you have something to follow up? And before that, I want to ask you a question because I, I think we could probably use some guidance here a little bit. Tell us how the RFP process worked in this case and whether or not we have to go out for another RFP in your eyes as our council.
Sure, that does come up every so often because certainly the developers are still working on their proposals. What, and this is a problem I think that councils everywhere have is, is working through the distinction of a bid as opposed to a proposal. The bid is, it's easy to think of as a house, you know. I want a 300, I want a 3,000 square foot house, five bedrooms, such and such. Or you've got a scope, so you know what your house is gonna be, and they just have to punch you in numbers, say that's how much it's gonna cost you. A proposal is to say, well, you know, I'd really like a mansion. Tell me what you got. So then they prepare, propose something. The distinction is, a, a proposal is you're looking to the developers for the ideas. We said early on, what we want is, are these, these things. And, and I think it's accurately reflected, the size that the council was looking for at the time. And I think if I called correctly, we certainly did not want, did not want a subsidy of any kind, although I think that was still a little bit left open in the RFP process. We also had within that that alternative proposals would be, would be accepted. And the reason for that is, I, I believe, the council at the time knew that we had $9 million and we wanted to see what we could get for our $9 million. And the proposals came back and the facilitator is working with the, uh, developers now. We hope in the next few weeks to get what will be the final and best proposal, and that's the proposal upon which you will judge. Uh, maybe one will be good, maybe two will be good, maybe none will be good. The council will be in a position as soon as the, those final and best proposals are here. While, I guess I understand the last comment certainly, that you always want to get the thing you exactly asked for in the first go-round. Proposals don't generally work that way. Proposals are more of a working process than a bid. You know, we, we know how much a certain item is when we go out to buy it. We'll pay X dollars for so much sand or whatever it is. But proposals are much more of a communication between the parties, trying to figure out what we can get for our money and what they will deliver for that amount of money. So I think, I, I've heard that a number of times from the public, from council members as well. You know, do we need to stop this process and go back out? And my answer is consistently no. This is a proposal and not a bid.
Jeremy is our assistant attorney. Do you concur?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I did have one other thing.
Yeah, yes, sir. That's all right. My bad.
Mr. Gaskin had presented some questions. I'm pretty sure I can answer them now.
Would the council mind if those were answered now? Doing the quick math, I think that's fine.
Uh, what is the agreement between the City of Jefferson and Lincoln? There is no agreement. What is the agreement between the City of Jefferson and the Earhart Agreement, uh, Group? There is no agreement. What is the agreement between Lincoln University and the Earhart Group that may or may not involve the City of Jefferson? There is no agreement for which I know. I think that references a, when Steve Rasmussen was city administrator, he had a concept plan that would involve Lincoln utilizing some of the conference center for culinary arts. That agreement didn't go anywhere. It's not, I don't think, there was no contract ever executed on the issue, and it's certainly not in effect now. Uh, what are the specific losses that can be reimbursed by the Earhart Group from the City of Jefferson? None. We don't have an agreement with them currently. Is the Farmer Holding Company aware of the above agreement between the Earhart Group and the City of Jefferson? Well, I don't know what the Farmer Holding Company is aware of. There is no agreement between the City of Jefferson and the Earhart Group. Should the FHC proposal be selected as the winner, are they eligible for up to the $100,000 reimbursement? No decision has been made. Not totally clear what the $100,000 is. But, uh, you know, what, what the selected developer will get from the city will be discussed in the, uh, uh, contract phase, but certainly I think it's clear to me that one of the goals of the council is to have little or no subsidy. Was the 600, then it talks about what Mayor Strumpf said and moved $600,000 in the post-conference center funding. I don't believe, I, I don't know what that article was, but I don't believe that accurately reflects the truth, but, uh.
I didn't see it that way myself, but go ahead.
Was $600,000 or more or less placed in the 2012 budget, 2013, 2014? No. No conference center money is placed in the budget. The money is held in the CVB, what we call the lockbox account. Uh, there is an account that the CVB holds, and it's got about $600,000 a year. There's currently $1.3 million in that account. So what, uh, I think that's the answer to all those questions, so.
All right, thank you, Drew. Okay, uh, next we have, I tell you what, that concludes tonight's, uh, hearing on the conference center. I want to thank everyone for showing up tonight. At this point in time, we will take a seven-minute recess and we'll come back to the city administrator job descriptions. Thank you.